Good afternoon, everyone. It is four o'clock. We will resume just as soon as we have a quorum of supervisors on the dais. All right. Let's begin our reconvening with a roll call to establish the continued presence of a quorum.
Supervisor Renas. Absent Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Smidion.
Here.
Vice President Lee. Present, thank you. President Ellenberg.
I am here as well.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Item six is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will ask Supervisor Smidion to lead us in the pledge today.
Please rise up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item seven is to consider recommendations relating to certificates of appreciation, commendations, and proclamations. We have a number today, and I'm going to come up to the front to begin with item seven A.
President Ellenberg.
Sorry.
You need to vote first on them.
That'd be good. Is there a motion to approve said certificates before we present them?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Chavez.
Yes.
Supervisor Smidion.
Smidion, aye.
Vice President Lee.
Aye.
President Ellenberg.
Yes.
Thank you. That carries with four.
Thank you very much. All right. So items, agenda item seven A is for Resource Parent Appreciation.
Sincere apologies. I neglected to read a correction into the record. There's a correction to item numbers seven E and eight E. The items should refer to a proclamation declaring May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month in Santa Clara County.
Thank you very much. Also, might someone turn around the podium? Just hang with us. We're on this. Can invite folks to join me on the podium. And for this first item, the folks who are going to receive the plaque for Resource Parent Appreciation Month should come on up and join me. All right. So today, I stand before you and next to you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to honor the heart and soul of our foster care system, our resource parents. Today, we proclaim May 2024 as Resource Parent Appreciation Month in Santa Clara County, and we recognize the commitment and compassion of the adults who have opened their hearts and their homes to children in need. Resource parents are so much more than caregivers. They are mentors, teachers, advocates, and many times the first stable and loving presence in the lives of children in our system. Children who are removed from their homes suffer immediate trauma, even where their home situations may have included abuse, neglect, or other forms of dysfunction. Their needs are complex, often contradictory, and very deep-seated. Resource parents open their hearts and homes and say, "We'll help you navigate through this time." Resource parents ensure children in their charge get to medical and therapeutic appointments, school, and whatever other resources are necessary to help them heal and remain as stable as possible in unsettling circumstances. They support family reunification efforts and even on occasion assume guardianship or adopt the children they care for. Our Department of Family and Children Services relies heavily on partnerships with resource parents to provide the security and attention children need and to share assessments and feedback with county staff who are all working to help children reach the best outcomes possible. And just as they care for children who are the county's responsibility, we have to constantly strive to do better by the resource parents in providing adequate support and respite so that they can manage often multiple children with different schedules and different needs. Only together can we make continual progress toward a system that is focused on child safety and on family well-being. So to all resource parents, your dedication and your sacrifices are seen and valued. We could not do this work without you. So on behalf of Santa Clara County, I thank you for your commitment to the children who need you most. Thank you for saving lives, saving families, and saving generations. I would like to invite Gilbert Murillo, Program Manager at the Department of Children and Family Services, as well as Denise Marchu, Executive Director with Kinship, Adoptive, and Foster Parents Association, known as CAFPA, to accept the proclamation and share a few thoughts. Share the thoughts, then we'll do a photo with the proclamation.
I'm on. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. It is an honor and a privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of all resource parents throughout Santa Clara County. Once a year, I get the opportunity to plant that little seed about our families and what they do and perhaps make a difference. May is Foster Family Appreciation Month. It's a month where we tell our caregivers, "Thank you for all they've done." It's a simple gesture, but powerful. It's saying that you are appreciated for all the sleepless nights, for loving someone else's child, for caring enough to put their own lives on hold so that they can make a difference in the life of a child. It's not an easy task. But to understand the intensity of a foster parent, you need to understand the children that we care for. Sweet Carla was a spunky little child who had had seven referrals before she came into care. Carla had six broken bones that had healed on their own. One in particular was a spiral break, and the little bone had grown outside of her arm with the skin over and had never been fixed. We need to do better. There's my little boy Jesse. He is a spunky, stubborn, talkative, loving 12-year-old little boy with Down Syndrome. At birth, was brought into care and deemed unadoptable. Ten years later, he is thriving, driving us nuts, but we need to do better when it comes to our special needs children. No child should be labeled. Then there's Ally, who as a pregnant teen, had been in many placements until she found Kate and Ryan. They are now proud grandparents, and she is part of a loving family of seven. No child should have multiple placements. Every youth, no matter their history, deserves a loving family, and we can do better. On the other side, there are the foster parents. There's Mary and Jenny, who take the most fragile of children and absolutely love them and help them heal. Shannon and Robin, moms who take care of not only the child in their home, but their child's entire family, inviting them to events, and in one particular, inviting them to live in another home that they had with patience and understanding. Absolutely amazing. And Anna, who takes the most spirited youth and works day and night to make their lives better. We could never thank her enough. These families are just a minute example of the families that care for our children. I'm always at awe over the dedication and belief they hold in their heart that every child deserves a safe place to sleep, loving arms to be held in, and they all deserve unconditional acceptance. Not only do they believe it, but they live it every day. May brings foster parents' plight into light, but remember that every minute of every day, our resource parents live and breathe for our community's most vulnerable children. So this month, take a minute to thank a foster parent. They are truly the silent heroes in our community. Thanks again for the proclamation.
We're going to turn away to do the presentation and a quick photo up, and then we'll be done. Thank you. Thank you both. Your mission.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Oops, so sorry. All right. We got a bunch to do today. Item seven B is for Teacher Appreciation Week, and I know we have some folks here who are going to come up and join me. San Jose Unified is in the house.
I'm excited about this one. As a former educator, school board member, and absolute superfan of teachers, it is an honor for me to kick off Teacher Appreciation Week in Santa Clara County, which begins today, May 6. I think it gets harder and harder and harder to be a teacher. As our societies endure one social injustice or crisis after another, we expect teachers to play more and more roles. We expect them to successfully educate our children, even those who come to school not having had a good night's sleep because they are unstably housed, or to focus on learning when their families are existentially stressed about how they will pay rent or buy food or clothing or shoes. Poverty is an impediment to learning and one problem teachers can't solve for. Many try, using their own money to provide snacks, resources, supplies, and more to students. Schools have made tremendous progress in addressing student nutrition, now providing up to two meals and three snacks every school day. But now, we expect teachers to be counselors or therapists, and in some states, armed guards. Flowers and award ceremonies are lovely, and I'm happy to participate in this effort today. But what teachers really need is, number one, higher salaries that reflect their value. And number two, the rest of us, for the rest of us to figure out how to alleviate poverty and ensure that every family is set up for success from the very beginning with stable housing, regular health care, developmental screening, access to adequate nutrition, high-quality childcare, so parents and teachers can work and improve the economic circumstances of their families, and ultimately, for every child to arrive healthy and ready to learn on the very first day of school. Just imagine what that would look like for our teachers, our schools, our families, and our community. What is amazing and mind-boggling is how successful so many teachers are despite the massive challenges that they face. How many of us can point to one or more teachers who changed our lives or trajectories or made us see the world in a new way or sparked our interest or imagination? How incredible it is to see teachers prepare students for our ever-changing world, keeping up with new ideas, pedagogy, and concepts so that you can convey them in ways that your students can hear and incorporate into their own lives. This week, let's show our gratitude for the teachers who have taught us, believed in us, pushed us, called us out when we deserved it, and stood by us. Let's remember all those moments when a teacher stayed after school to help us with a difficult problem, or the times they encouraged us when we were ready to give up. But equally importantly, let's not stop with sentiment, but recommit ourselves to ensuring that the professionals who literally make all of their professions possible are paid fairly and have benefits, including family leave, access to childcare for their own children, and that they work in environments that are rich with all the non-academic supports that children need to thrive so that you can concentrate on the learning and growth in your classrooms. That means wellness centers, onsite health screenings, before and after-school care or enrichment, and supports for students with diverse and atypical learning needs so they can be included in all school classes and activities. Appreciation is great. Action is the real deal. The county is here to do our part to provide all of the academic adjacent supports we can so that you can do your jobs as well as we know you can. I'm now delighted to introduce the three teachers standing here and invite them to say a few words. We have Joanna Lattz, who's a teacher at Schallenberger, Colleen Lemon, a teacher at Willow Glen Middle School, and a shout-out to Catherine Henshaw, teacher at Lincoln High School. Lincoln High School, who was invited by San Jose but unfortunately couldn't join us. So who did I not name?
That's Esme Batista. She's a director.
Hi, Esme. I know you. I was not even focusing. All right. We are professional all the time up here. So, welcome.
And I'm supposed to follow that? Please.
You can only go up.
Oh, I don't think so. All right. Well, thank you for the proclamation, Ms. Ellenberg. Thank you so much and for inviting us to attend today's board meeting to kick off Teacher Appreciation Week. I would like to reciprocate the invitation and invite you to visit my classroom at Willow Glen Middle School. I promise, you will be in awe of the teachers and administrators at our school. Teaching is a performance-based occupation. We are the director, the producer, the writer, the stage manager, the set designer, the artistic designer, the production assistant, and so on, all while performing as the lead actor for a six-hour show, a new and exciting show every day of the school year. Performance aside, as my 27-year career has unfolded, I have become acutely aware of what students really need. First of all, there are three things every child brings to the classroom at the start of each school year. A desire to succeed, a unique gift, and a personal story, their life story. In addition to improving academic capabilities, students need opportunities for and to celebrate successes. They need their gifts highlighted. Believe me, some gifts are more unique than others. And most importantly, they need to add a memorable chapter to the story of their lives. Spending a year in Lemonland, as I like to call my classroom, not only improves literacy but provides a space for each student to experience the joy of learning. Again, thank you for kicking off Teacher Appreciation Week by acknowledging and commending a profession that is one of the main foundations of our society.
Hi, everyone. My name's Joanna Lattz. I am a special ed teacher. Have to get my voice here because I've caught the germs from the kids. I just want to let you know. Anyways, not contagious anymore. I just want to let you know I've been teaching at San Jose Unified for 37 years. Thirty-two have been in special education. As a special education teacher, I have been an advocate for my students and their families. People say, "You must be really patient." I always say, "I am not patient. I am a solver. I have to figure out where they are, and wherever they're at, move them forward, as far as I can get them." I have the privilege of working with some of my same students for up to three years, and I get to see a move from not knowing even their name or their parent's name to readers and to knowing how to do math and all these other things. This year has been especially fun because I was at Target at Christmas time, and one of my students came up. I saw his dad. I don't usually recognize the students because I see them when they're this big and when they're that big. I don't know who they are anymore because they have facial hair. And his dad says, "Gabriel, Gabriel, look who's there." And Gabriel turns around and goes, "Do you know what this is?" And Gabriel yells out, "It's a Christmas miracle," and gave me a big hug. And then this past Friday, we went bowling at Bolero, and one of my previous students, same year as Gabriel, Marco, came in, and he has autism, and he doesn't like loud noises and he doesn't like flashy lights. But he came in and gave me a hug and said, "I love you, Ms. Lattz." And then he went away. I'm like, "Can I come to your graduation?" Which is next year, and I'm so excited for that. So special ed students graduate, they get to go to college or onto careers, their families get to see them progress, and it's wonderful. In addition to that, I have worked as an advocate for teachers. I've worked with the union, I've worked with the school boards, and I have helped to advocate for teacher rights, teacher salaries, teacher working conditions, and teachers being able to live in this valley. We have to work hard to get teacher housing in this valley. Teachers should live where they teach. Anyway, thank you very much for this award. It is just heartwarming to be acknowledged in this way. Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a pic, too?
Yeah.
Nobody move. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
Well, that'd be great. That'd be so fun.
Thank you. All right. We're getting everybody today. Item seven C is to recognize Older Americans Month. This May, we are celebrating older Americans, and in Santa Clara County, we are embracing the theme Powered by Connection. Ooh, I forgot. Who's coming up? Come on up. Thank you. Since May of 1963, May has been a special time to acknowledge the contributions and stories of older Americans, and this year, we continue to honor their impact in our community. In Santa Clara County, we believe that our diverse communities represent the strength of our collective worth. And here's a newsflash: If we are truly fortunate, every single one of us will one day get to be an older adult, some of us much sooner than others. Not looking anywhere. Regardless of our race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation, if we're lucky, we're gonna get old. So, we can afford to be a little selfish in our thinking here. What do you want in your community? How do you want to ensure that you aren't disregarded, left behind, isolated, or ignored? How can you be sure that you are not going to lose your housing or be cared for or will be cared for when you fall ill or just fall apart? We all have to be part of building the community we want for ourselves, one where we can safely navigate our streets and neighborhoods, have someone help us with new technology, ensure that our minds stay sharp with challenges and social encounters. Connection combats isolation and loneliness, it supports independence, and promotes health. This year, we'll focus on enhancing and growing those connections across the county. We will promote resources that help older adults engage more fully in life through community events, social clubs, and volunteer opportunities. We aim to ensure that older adults have access to transportation, food, mental health care, and more. I am a particular fan of intergenerational connections, whether it's co-locating childcare and adult memory care programs, older adults serving as youth mentors, or participating in formal or informal learning environments with youth and young adults, or seeing adults, older adults who have the privilege to do so, volunteering as interns or council for organizations of all types. These interactions have the possibility to enrich lives on both sides of the age spectrum, and we would all benefit from being more open to these models. Maybe some of you remember Robert De Niro as the intern to Anne Hathaway. He literally saved the day for all the millennials, and he became happier along the way. Everybody won. So this Older Americans Month, let's commit to fostering these important connections. Let's ensure that our older adults know that they are respected, valued, and essential to our society. And to our older friends here today, your community cherishes you. We thank you for your contributions, your wisdom, and your spirit. Thank you for being an integral part of Santa Clara County. And it's now my delight to invite Mary Ann Warren, the Director of the Department of Aging and Adult Services, to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you so much for this wonderful proclamation. Thank you all for being here. As mentioned, the 2024 theme for Older Americans Month is Powered by Connections, which recognizes the profound impacts, meaningful relationships, and which recognizes the profound impacts meaningful relationships and social connections have on our health and our well-being. Connectedness plays a vital role in supporting independence and aging in place by combating isolation, loneliness, and other issues. Overshadowing this is the prevalence of ageism in our society. It affects young and old. And until ageism is included within the DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Framework, progress is hampered. I also want to remind everyone that our 2024 season of Senior Safari will be beginning on May 23rd. We're having our tenure kickoff on May 23rd at 8:30 at Happy Hollow Park and Zoo. Thank you.
It is now my honor, as I continue to stand before you. Whoops, let's wait for everybody to come up. Sorry, Chad. And Consuelo. Oh, my gosh. And you will hear why there are so many folks up here. They are all essential. It is my honor to stand before you and proclaim May 2024 Affordable Housing Month in Santa Clara County. We live in the most expensive region in the country. The county is home to vast wealth, and that wealth has pushed up the cost of housing to exorbitant levels, unattainable for many middle and working-class families, let alone people who are economically insecure or destitute. We don't have a crisis of affordable housing and homelessness in spite of the wealth that surrounds us. We have a crisis precisely because of the mammoth income gap. And so we must respond. For both ethical and economic reasons, we have to increase the supply of deeply affordable housing for people with low, very low, and extremely low incomes, and for those who are unable to care for themselves. As the county is the primary provider of safety net services, we must be a partner in funding the units that are truly the least likely to be profitable for developers. The real estate market is not going to fix this situation on its own. Santa Clara County has over-delivered on the promise of the 2016 Measure A ballot initiative, yet people have continued to lose their housing. Homelessness prevention is a key companion to expanding the supply of deeply affordable housing, and that work requires deep and broad partnerships. And while it's generally our practice to invite a representative from a single organization to accept a proclamation, I simply could not do that today. There are too many valued partners in this work. And even with the group I've invited to join us today so that we can recognize and celebrate each of their roles, I am well aware that there are many, many others who aren't standing here. So to everyone watching or listening, please know that if you or your organization or your company is working to make housing affordable, to expand the housing supply, or to end or prevent homelessness, this month is to celebrate you and to extend tremendous gratitude. Standing with me today are some of the greatest and most impactful champions in this work, each of whom has been invited to share ever so briefly their organization's primary contribution to this critical work. We will hear from Consuelo Hernandez, Director of the County Office of Supportive Housing; Regina Williams, the CEO at SV at Home; Preston Prince, the CEO at the Santa Clara County Housing Authority; Chad Bohorkes, representing Destination Home, one of our most impactful nonprofit partners; Rosalyn Huey, Acting Director of the San Jose Housing Department; and Gabriela Gabran, a resident of recently opened Vitalia Housing Development on South Bascom Avenue in D4. I'm going to invite Gabriela to speak first to ground us in exactly why we are doing this work, not for metrics or goals or numbers of units or projects, but for human beings, every single one of whom has a story. Here's one.
I'm Gabriela Gabrian, and I have come to Santa Clara County in my twenties as an immigrant without the base of education or language and worked as a waitress and in the food industry. I think they paid a dollar then. So stable housing and understanding community and how things work here didn't come naturally. Through my life, at different stages, I was unhoused, stayed in shelters, especially when going through a divorce. And then through illness, I had lung cancer twice. The first time in 2007, they removed my lungs, so I couldn't do my job. Waitressing is hard work. And then a second lung cancer in 2009 while homeless at a shelter. So my trajectory did change. 2009, just days before my expiration, I had radiation to my lung. It was an experimental trial, and it worked because I'm here. Now they do that all the time at Stanford. So that was a blessing. And then at the same time that I found out where I was going to live, I also found out that I have housing. So in the last 13 years, I have been housed, and I have been able to participate in my community in many forms, take responsibilities for my brothers and sisters because the community is my family. Collaborating between agencies and taking responsibilities for our youth and our elderly people is a reflection of our values. So how they are cared is who we are. To be alive and be able to even express a word, for me, is a true humbling experience, and I feel very privileged to be standing here. Thank you for...
Good afternoon, everybody. Consuelo Hernandez, Director of the Office of Supportive Housing. Our office does a lot, but today I'll focus my comments on what we do in terms of supporting the production of affordable and supportive housing. I will say that as a county who doesn't control land use, one of the key things that we have to ensure that we do is work with the 15 incorporated cities in the county. Because they approve the land use, we have great partnerships with the 15 cities to make sure that if there are any roadblocks, that we help remove that. And then, most importantly, as Board President Ellenberg mentioned, the 2016 Measure A Affordable Housing Bond, our office has played the key role in implementing that bond. Eight years later, 56 developments, total of 5,000 units. When all projects are done and approved, we will have housed over 17,000 people in those affordable housing units. So our job is to not create another regulatory barrier. If there's a project that we want to fund, our doors are open. We maintain flexibility. We do follow a set of guidelines, but really is making sure that we remove that sense of bureaucracy and government to lend and operate out of urgency. I think that has been one of the reasons our plan has been successful and also in implementing other visions that the board has set, whether that's educator workforce housing, housing for individuals with an intellectual developmental disability, or transitioned-age youth, you name it, we've done it, thanks to this great board that we have. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Chad. I'm with Destination Home. Just really quick, two main points. Our mission is to prevent and end homelessness. And the only true way to end homelessness is through housing. And we get distracted through a lot of other things. And I know that our community is really worn out by the homeless crisis that we all interact with on a daily basis, no matter who we are. But we have to stay laser-focused on building as much permanent housing as possible. And as Supervisor Ellenberg mentioned and Consuelo just referenced in more detail, the 2016 Measure A Housing Bond was incredibly successful and just required a few pennies from each and every resident of Santa Clara County to make 56 permanent complexes with 17,000 residents of Santa Clara County being housed. I would encourage us to find a way to do it again because that's probably our number-one success of the last decade in housing. Thanks.
Thank you, President Ellenberg, and all of the supervisors. My name is Preston Prince. I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Clara County Housing Authority. We provide housing and housing assistance to 22,000 families here in Santa Clara County. The vast majority are making much lower than 30% of area median incomes. But seniors are making around $10,000 a year. A lot of the families we work with are making $30,000 a year. Imagine, how can one afford housing in this community on those kinds of incomes? So we do have rental assistance, but unfortunately, we only get... The one thing I like through Affordable Housing Month is this recognition that through rental assistance, we would be able to house everyone in this community. But we only get from the federal government enough dollars for one in every six families that are income-qualified. 70% of our very low-income families are extremely rent-burdened, meaning they're paying more than 50% of their income towards rent. It's really hard to figure out what you're going to do every day with your kids or with your health when you're struggling and worried about your housing. So one thing I hope comes out of Affordable Housing Month is more advocacy at the federal level. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rosalyn Huey. I am serving as Acting Housing Director for the City of San Jose for just a few more days. We are super excited to have a new housing director starting next week, and I'm also serving as Deputy City Manager. I want to thank Board President Ellenberg for inviting us here this afternoon to be a part of the proclamation. Also want to recognize Housing Department's Assistant Director, Rachel Vanderveen, who is here. She's been working in the Housing Department well over two decades, working with all of the partners here in advancing affordable housing for our community. The one thing that I want to say about affordable housing is that it's just not about housing itself. It's really about uplifting our communities. And so we are huge advocates in the city of San Jose for lifting up everyone, for connecting our children to quality education, for making sure people have access to affordable transportation, to make sure people have access to the health care that they need, to the grocery stores that they need. So in our minds, affordable housing means lifting up everyone in our community, and we cannot do that without the partnerships. So we're very thankful for the partnerships we have with the county. So many nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations, our affordable housing developers, really, it's a true partnership. So thank you again for having us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Celestin Williams, and I'm with SV at Home. And I'm very excited to be here. So thank you, Madam President, for inviting me, as well as the Board of Supervisors. For us at SV at Home, Affordable Housing Month is about housing justice. That means, first, we believe that housing and recognize that housing is a human right. And, second, we recognize that it takes all of us collectively to be a part of this work, this movement, this commitment, to creating a community where we all can live and thrive and stay and build roots. And so I just wanted to highlight the fact that this is the opportunity, this proclamation here today, to build on the commitment that this county has made towards creating a Silicon Valley and a Santa Clara County where we all can live. And so I ask you all, what are you willing to learn? What are you willing to share with your neighbor? And what are you willing to do to realize a Silicon Valley and a Santa Clara County where we all can live? Thank you.
All right, you're almost done with me. But also how awesome that there are so many things to celebrate in May. So this month, we are celebrating National Historic Preservation Month. Historic preservation helps us remember the rich history that came before us. I did it again. I'm sorry. Come on up. I try to be efficient. Thank you. My apologies. Just diving in. I know, but take your time. All right. Here in Santa Clara County, our commitment to this cause is not just about maintaining buildings, but maintaining culture. It's about honoring the diverse cultural influences from the Moecma Olone to the waves of Spanish, Mexican, Anglo, and other communities that have woven the rich cultural tapestry of our region. Each preserved site marks a chapter in our shared history, a story of who we are, who we were, the good, the bad, the ugly, and the beautiful. By maintaining our community's character, we keep our roots deep even as we grow and evolve. This month, let's pledge not only to celebrate, but to actively participate in preserving our historical landmarks. Let's continue to conduct historic resource surveys, nominate key sites to our county heritage resource inventory, and support the rehabilitation and restoration of our treasured properties. Together, we ensure that the legacy of Santa Clara County and all its cultural richness is not forgotten. It is shared proudly with generations to come. Thank you, and thank you, folks, for your dedication to preserving the soul of our community. And we have members of the commission who are here to receive the proclamation. And Teri Johnson will speak.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I must say, I'm a little envious. We don't get this kind of crowd at our HAC meetings, so... Look for it on the agenda. You're all welcome to attend. My name is Teri Johnson. I chair the County Historical Heritage Commission. And on behalf of the commission, I want to thank President Ellenberg and the rest of the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming the month of May as National Preservation Month throughout the county.